Okay. It's 6:30. Call this meeting to order. I'm told we don't have anyone for an invocation. Mayor Protem Smith?
Yes.
Would you mind?
Absolutely. If you don't mind, please join me in stand. All your heads, close your eyes. Dear my father, thank you so much for this amazing evening, Lord. Thank you for all that you provide for us and thank you for all of our leaders, not just locally, Lord, but up and down the state and throughout the United States. And let us be reminded of the importance of coming together in all that we do, in all that we govern, and in your name, amen.
And for the flag salute, council member Green, would you mind?
Ready? And a report, please. Ready, begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Green?
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Here.
Mayor Castillo?
Here.
Absent from tonight's meeting are councilmember Aaron Crowns and councilmember Walty.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, is there anything to report out of closed session?
Madam Mayor, we have no items to report out of closed session.
Okay. As to the approval of the city council agenda, Mr. City Manager, are there any changes?
Yes, we would like to pull item number 10 on the agenda under business items. Like to continue item 10 to the first regularly scheduled meeting in February.
Okay. Need a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the exception of item 10.
So moved. I make a second.
That requires a roll call vote.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Castillo?
Aye.
Motion carried with councilmembers Aaron Crowns and Walty absent.
Okay, so moving on to ceremonial matters, we have a citizen of the month. This is very exciting because this is our first citizen of the month for the first year we're doing this. Reese, can you come up?
Ooh, first one. That's the best one.
So there's the camera right there, so everyone can see you. Come over here. This is Reese Walsh. She is our first citizen of the month. Reese, I have a certificate here that says, "In recognition of your hard work raising money for COPS for Kids during the holiday season to buy presents for kids in your community, you are recognized by the City Council of Canyon Lake." And it is signed by all the council members. Do you want to just kind of talk a little bit about what COPS for Kids did? And what you were involved in? Yes, please.
So I would like to thank the community of Canyon Lake and my friends and classmates that helped me earn the money for COPS for Kids. I wanted to help the kids without Christmas gifts because I knew they felt lonely or sad.
Good job.
Awesome.
Good job.
We need more citizens like you in this world and definitely in this city. Reese, what grade are you in?
I am in fifth grade.
And what school do you go to?
Tuscany Hills Elementary.
Excellent. And did you have any friends who were in Canyon Lake specifically that helped you besides your family members?
Um, we had Jonathan and Jeffrey and Kaylee Ray.
Wonderful. And how much money were you able to donate to COPS for Kids?
$3,050.
$3,050. That's amazing. We are so proud of you and we look forward to seeing you do a lot more in Canyon Lake since you are so involved. Thank you so much. Here you go. Can we take a picture? Where, do you want us over there or over here? Okay. I'm smiling under my mask, I promise.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Great job, Reese. Thank you.
Reese, who are you here with?
I am here with my parents and grandparents.
Here with parents and grandparents.
All right.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, rock star.
Okay. Moving on to community reports, is our director, Darcy Burke, on the line?
I am Mayor Castillo.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you and the council as well and staff. Thank you for this opportunity. I just want to start off, our budget workshop started off, kicked off on Monday, January 11. And over the next five months, we will have a series of special study sessions that will go over all the elements that go into crafting our budget. And so based on these sessions and a rate study that is currently being conducted, we will set our rates in June. We're encouraging the public and other stakeholders to attend these sessions. Virtual access is available and your feedback is very important. You can access the meeting via our website, WebEx. And the information on how to log in is posted on the website on the agenda. The rate increase, if we have one, at least the setting of the rate will be for, will take effect in July 1st of this year. And our tentative hearing is June 10th of this year. The rate increase that we originally had scheduled for July 1st has been deferred until April 1st of this year. There is still a moratorium on service shut offs due to non-payment. And to date, that has cost the district and you, our rate payers, approximately $1.1 million. It is estimated to more than double to $2.4 million by the end of June if we are unable to recoup that money. Last year, there was a piece of legislation passed that changed how we actually notify customers and work with them for payment arrangements when they have a shut off for non-payment. And what we're working towards now is if we can go ahead and start implementing that because that would allow us to make sure that we have enough funding for those that need some rate assistance. And we are also working with the county with a number of other programs for that. And the sooner we can get people back on track without that huge number looming, the better off we all are. The Canyon Lake Water Treatment Plant, as you may recall, is currently offline and that's due to the PFOs levels. Shortly, hopefully in the next week or two, we will begin a pilot test for two additional treatment processes, granulated activated carbon and ion exchange. Together, they have found to be extremely effective, both in removing the PFOs and cost effective compared to some other options we explored. An added benefit of these two treatments is they will also be very effective in treating taste and odor issues which we chronically have with Canyon Lake, basically due to the water quality of it. The pilot study will run for about nine to 12 months, depending on what we discover. So we will, I'll have to come back and let you know what, how that pilot study is going. We were actually able to get one of the world's leading experts on PFOs to conduct the study, so I have great faith in his ability to come up with a good alternative. In addition to these new treatment options and as part of our long-term facilities master plan, there are a number of significant capital improvements scheduled for the water treatment plant. And these are delayed until the pilot testing is completed. Obviously, we need to know where to put those within the treatment process, how much of a footprint they'll take, and what would be the most ideal location. So except for regular operational exercises or emergencies, the plan is expected to remain offline for the next two to three years, which also means the lake levels will be more consistent than higher years in the past. I know there's a number of residents, I was called out on social media by one of our residents thanking me for that. And although I'm really excited for Canyon Lake as a community to enjoy that extra level, the lake's primary purpose is a drinking water reservoir. So the water we normally would take from the lake, we are now paying it off double to metropolitan for that. So there is consequences to that. What I am most excited about as part of the study that we requested is there were some options brought to the board for consideration, which we will explore later, that are going to address water reliability, treatment plant efficiency, source water quality, which means improvements to Canyon Lake. And I'm not in a position yet to share those. We haven't picked an option yet. But all of them were extremely viable and I think will have a lot of long-term benefits. And I think the residents of Canyon Lake will be really excited on some of the outcomes for those investments. We are also kicking off our strategic planning at the end of January. This process will be extremely helpful as we prioritize projects and budget and resource allocation. As part of this key effort, we instructed the consultant to do a lot of outreach to our stakeholders, including the city and the POA. And you hopefully will participate in interviews if you are asked to do so. And in parallel with that strategic plan, we are beginning a rebranding effort. And a customer survey will be part of that effort. And that's basically to get information and real data to understand the overall experience our customers have with the district and to help us, help me better represent your priorities. And it also provides an opportunity for us to identify areas of improvement and address them. If we don't know where we're falling short, obviously, we can't fix that. And just a few other quick things, Mayor Castillo, if you'll allow me. Recent rains added about a foot of water to the lake. This is, normally doesn't happen until February or March, so that's actually pretty exciting. Our sewer rehabilitation project will be starting this month. You will see EDMWV crews out through the community doing a camera line inspection with cam, sewer line inspection with cameras. So, and that will be throughout the community. There were approximately 20 residents on Canyon Lake Drive South that had their water meters removed to anthracite in their pipes. And this was from a filter failure a number of years ago that's still in the pipes. Those meters have been reinstalled and with recent summer flushing, we did something a little different this year. The majority of that filter media, we believe, has been removed. And recent sampling shows that there's not even trace evidence of it. But time will tell. So obviously, if someone has a problem or concern, they can either call the district directly or call me or email me. I'm happy to answer their questions and I'm usually pretty good about responding. That's all I have this evening. I'm happy to take any questions.
Anyone have questions?
Director Burke, I just want to say thanks again for just always being there. I know you hear this a lot, but it truly means a lot that, you know, I'm having people reach out to me, you know, telling me how good of a job you're doing, letting them know what's going on in all things that is water. So I just want to say thank you so much and I'm looking forward to working with you again in 2021 and continue the good work. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much for the kind words. I really appreciate it and the time. Thank you.
I also want to say thank you for being so responsive. I've had people mention to me that when they reach out to you, you provide them with an answer in short order. I've always seen that you've posted your cellphone number online for people to get ahold of you and it, I think it really makes a difference and we're grateful.
Thank you. And I can't stress enough, I'm so excited about some of the solutions we're bringing to Canyon Lake. And it's taken me two years to get there, but I really, I can't wait to share with the community some of the really exciting things the district has planned to address some of the long-term issues that we've been living with on the lake for some time. So your words of encouragement really mean a lot because it's been a tough struggle.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Do we have President Chris Pollan from the Canyon Lake Property Owners Association on the line?
Yes, I'm John. Can I take it you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Castillo, for another opportunity to speak to you. Happy New Year to all. Mayor, thank you so much for attending our meeting last night and offering some words to our community. I think it's really a great signal that we're both addressing each of our councils and boards. It shows a willingness to work together and something that I know that we're talking about trying to expand as we go forward. A couple of things that happened last night at our meeting. One is that we approved the restatement of our bylaws, which is just a nitpicky little detail thing that needs to be done, but took a long time to get done. Bylaws have grown over the last 50 years and they have been changed. And the attorneys told us we had to get them all verified and restated, which we did. It's going to provide a basis so that our community members all know exactly what our bylaws are and will provide a basis for our elections that are coming up in April and May and some revisions that we're hoping to introduce to our members about how we run our community. We also approved a draft set of architectural standards that are out now for review. We're really very pleased with the way our community has been developing. It has been, we've been working through our general manager and our staff to refresh many of our buildings and our signage and bring a new order to everything that's going on. You know, we are a community and I know that you're all well aware, you're all members of it. We are incorporated as a mutual benefit corporation. We have bylaws and we have declarations of restrictions, our CCNRs, which really allow us and give us a responsibility to make our community meet the needs of our community members as were set out by our developers. Our goals are to create, maintain a consistently clean, attractive community, attractive neighborhoods and homes and recreational amenities and promote a quality of living. Because we have grown up over the last 50 years, we have a wide variety of buildings and facilities that were built at different times with different interests and different types of materials and they all look different. And there's really a general lack of consistency to suggest that we're a unified planned community. Maybe that's what they all thought they wanted to be before, but that's not the direction that we're going. This board has set out a purpose statement and vision that we want to become a family-oriented community with a wide range of demographics that aspires to become a united, sought-after resort-style community for permanent residents with a wide variety of recreational interests. And the key there, and this is something that we talked about quite a bit, I know I've talked to you before about this, but the notion that we want it to be a resort-style community for our permanent residents. We're not looking to become a resort. We are looking to have that kind of feeling. And so what that really requires is structures that are professionally designed and this is what's rooted in our architectural standards, with styles that support their function and really match the surrounding existing structures in each one of their locations. And we're not looking for general uniformity. We want our buildings to be designed such that they support sustainability efforts and resilient efforts and with life cycle costs in mind. Sustainability and resilience is really important to all of us. Sustainability is all about minimizing our impact on the environment and we're working, as you know, I think, to reduce our water, our usage significantly. And we're also looking at our resilience and ability to resist and recover from the natural disasters that we're all, that we're all having to face. Uniformity throughout the community is not a uniform goal. Rather, what we're looking for is attractive, collective, memorable buildings and outdoor spaces tailored to the individual communities to utilize them. And we're looking, and it's part of our standards, to upgrade our existing structures as we go through our remodeling and refurbishing phases to these kinds of standards. I wanted to take the time to say these few words to you because I know that there's some very exciting things going on in economic development and the city is considering doing outside of our gates, which we are fully supportive and look forward to working to you with. Just wanted you to have a clear idea about what we were looking forward to so as you plan the developments around our community that we can all be one unified, one unified city. Thanks a lot for the opportunity to address you and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? All right. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate the call. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Thank you.
Of course. I understand that Chamber of Commerce is not present. Okay, so we will move along to public safety update from Riverside Sheriff's and Lieutenant Rails.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council Members. I presented you the last public safety report for 2020, which covers the month of December. Deputies responded to 391 calls for service, which was up five calls from November of 386. During the month of December, there were five Part 1 crimes, which I'm happy to say we were down from 16 last month. So quite a bit less. We had one aggravated assault. We had one burglary, one theft, and two motor vehicle thefts. In addition, deputies wrote four traffic citations, made two DUI arrests, responded and investigated four traffic collisions, and made four additional arrests for outstanding warrants. But that covers December. So you can see it's down quite a bit, which is, which is great. Hopefully, we can keep it there.
Is, I see we had 32 DUI arrests in October. I'm assuming that's a typo.
32. Yes, that was a typo.
Either that or a busy month.
It was actually, it should be three.
Okay.
Yeah, three, three in October, two in November, and then two in December. So staying right around two.
What are the parking citations that you just?
These are going to be not parking citations. These are going to be actually citations for, for driving. Mostly speeding.
Okay. Okay. I see, it says traffic slash.
Yeah, traffic slash. If we're doing parking citations, you're going to see quite a bit more. But they don't focus on, our deputies won't be focusing on, on too many traffic, I mean, too many parking violations. It'll be mostly for traffic violations.
Okay. Thank you.
So just in general, public safety in Canyon Lake, pretty good?
Oh, it's been great. We actually took stats of all the surrounding cities in the area and I believe maybe a city manager got those prior. And we're one of the lowest by far per capita in the area. And it usually stays, stays pretty low.
Okay. Love to hear that.
And to give an update on the roadway end.
Oh, yes, please.
We focused last month on doing a lot of high-visibility patrols there and arrested four to five individuals for outstanding warrants. These four warrants here are mostly for that, just being visible in the area. Talked to one of my deputies today and he said over the last two to three weeks, it's actually been almost a ghost town there as far as activity. So they're spending time there. They're parking there, doing reports when they're not doing proactive. So it's, it seems like it's starting to decrease the activity. So we'll just keep on top of it and hopefully we won't have any more complaints.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you.
No, thank you.
Lieutenant, if I might?
Yes.
I understand we have a new captain at the Lake Elsinore Station.
Yes, he will be starting tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. Could you tell us a little bit about him?
He will be at the next meeting. His name is Andrew Alea. He is currently a lieutenant, well, he's captain now. He got promoted today, but he was a lieutenant at the Harupa Valley Station and he covered the Norco contract.
Oh, okay.
I've known him for almost 20 years. We were deputies together, sergeants together. He's been around the county, so you're going to like him a lot. He's a great guy. So I will bring him at the next meeting and introduce him.
Sounds great.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have Chief Barnett on the line from Cal Fire? I don't believe so. Okay, well, we have statistics from them. But no person. Okay. Moving along. Code enforcement, we have a new senior enforcement officer. Hi, Ruby. This is Ruby Manzano and we are excited to hear from you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Councilmember Green. So I'm going to go over the December activity report highlighting three items mainly that have been a concern. We have seen an increase in illegal dumping of our trash bins in the town center, including our own, City Hall's. Peppes Trash Bin has been having a big issue and also behind the scorch stop. Why it's becoming an issue, it's because when you have a lot of overflowing trash and trash on the ground, CRNR will refuse to pick up that trash. And so then it'll sit there for a day or two. And we've had to have CRNR come and do a second pickup. We've actually cited, we've issued two citations for this illegal dumping from our bin. It's really hard to monitor these trash bins or everybody's trash bins because we don't know where it's coming from. We know it's coming from outside. We get a lot of complaints about contractors dumping on there and it's just, it's a nuisance and it's difficult to keep track of, you know, really what's going on and how we're getting these massive amounts of trash in these bins. So all we can do is, we have one of our officers who likes dumpster diving. So she'll go in there and she'll, she'll grab boxes and see, okay, who's been dumping. And when we have enough evidence, we take photos and then it'll give us the opportunity to sight.
Okay.
Hey, Ruby, have you noticed, because I've gotten complaints that because of the large amount of trash, the overflow and also you get a larger increase of rats.
Right.
And those two businesses you mentioned seem to have a larger rat population. Have we got Vector involved in that?
Vector will not come out for the commercial locations. We have, we've tried, but they won't serve us that. It would be up to the, either the merchant owners or between the business owners and the merchant owners.
Okay. Have they addressed those issues? Because I've had people actually tell me that there are.
They have addressed it from what they've told me with the merchant owners. I just don't know what's came out of their meetings. I don't even know if they're having meetings.
Okay. I don't know. I know a couple of the buildings.
But I can reach out. I know, I can't remember her name, but one of the owners for that side of where the spur stop is, I can reach out to her and just see kind of what's going on, if they've been discussing this or, you know, meeting up with the owners.
Okay. Thank you.
And then next is our BLM. We still have a high level of activity up there. Although the number of vehicles decreased to 40 in the month of December, we're seeing a rise in dirt bikes and man-made dirt rents that people are creating. So that's kind of been one of the nuisances right now out there on BLM. Those are pretty difficult to kind of go after. They don't have license plates and so therefore we can't really catch, you know, in sight. They have a number on the side of the, their bikes, but, you know, those are really hard. And they take off and we're not going to chase after them.
Is this something maybe we could do a social media campaign on just so that we can share out there that it really is not dirt bike zone?
Absolutely.
Are they actually building berms?
Mm-hmm. They are. They are.
So they're, they're building tracks now? They're building jobs?
They are. Dawn and I actually had caught one of, it was two guys out there and they were starting, you know, they even had buckets of water, gallons of water to start.
Well, they had problems down at Stevenson's Ranch with the biking community. And so they have come in and done a very proactive, so they may be moving as a reason being to different areas. And what it ends up doing, it really, in the long haul damages, even though it doesn't seem like anything, it damages the turf and the soil and then erosion comes in and lots of other stuff. So we might want to get the BLM and maybe Riverside County Parks because they're coming in at KBIT. And I'll also reach out to RCA.
Okay, yeah, we were, Dawn and I were like, well, can we shovel this out? But there's just too many, you know? You really need.
Well, they actually down there brought in tractors.
Yeah.
And actually really did major, major work.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, it's becoming big. There's a lot more than the past couple of years now.
Are there any mountain biking going on back there?
Not that much.
Okay.
Couple, but not a lot.
Have we, we indicated a point of entry in regards to, are these people driving in and have trailers and dropping their bikes? Or are they coming in from their neighborhoods so they can escape easily without a vehicle being there? Because, you know, when you, when you head out of the gate, you'll notice on Saturdays and Sundays, you'll see, last weekend was probably a dozen dads and little kids on 50s and they were just hanging out, you know, teaching their sons and daughters how to ride 50s just in a little, little area. I mean, that's easy to say, hey, guys, you can't ride here. But the other ones with razors and quads and 125s, 250s and whatnot, are they coming in without a truck and a trailer? Is that why we can't get them?
They are. They are. They're just going in like that. That way they can get away quick enough.
So it's probably most of the people that are living in the rural areas and they're just driving off their backyard and cruising in, hit the trails and then it is what it is.
Yeah. I saw actually about five or six trailers parked on Greenwall.
Right.
And then they offloaded all their bikes. And then one of the roads, before you get over the hill and drop into Canyon Lake, must have direct access to the hills because I got around and looked and pretty soon here they are on top. So it must be an easy way to get out there.
Have you, have you had any contact with Menifee PD in regards to? So what they've done now is, when they're looking at their patrols, these guys are going in and out of neighborhoods. And I'm just wondering if they're saying, hey, it's on a Saturday, you know, we're noticing, you know, these trailers and these, you know, toy haulers on a Saturday parked in a neighborhood, you know, it's pretty consistent. You know, they would know, they're, at least on the outside, being able, because I'm seeing that too. You know, they would know, at least on the outside, being able, because I'm seeing that too. They're parking ways away, they're finding a neighborhood, they're finding an area where they can just, you know, illegally cross the street real quick, and then they're on dirt, and then their trailer's just waiting for them away from where you could catch them. Just wondering if that's a way to deliver the message, you know, if we can, you know, maybe communicate with them. I also ran into Fish and Game a few weeks ago, and they said, I told them about the issues that we're having. And they said, look, it's not our expertise, but we have flashing lights too. So, you know, have your code enforcement reach out to us, and we'll go ahead and team up with them and at least do our job, which is patrolling the water, making sure that people aren't throwing out nets, and also looking for guys on bikes that shouldn't be there. So maybe those are a couple avenues that we can at least, you know, set up some communication with to say, hey, we're really trying to address this thing and see if we can stop it.
Yeah, that actually is a good idea. Officer Ecofield and I were discussing maybe the possibility of reaching out to Menifee PD and seeing, you know, if we can maybe just join forces and at least communicate so that they can let us know when they see people out there and we can come out.
Yeah.
Just the question for our, so is the split between Paris and Elsinore, is that that area? Or how far do you guys come back to the east?
It's kind of split in between.
Greenwald?
Yeah, we cover parts of Greenwald, but most of it's Paris Station. And I was going to interject and say that I'm having the same problem in City of Lake Elsinore, because I'm also liaison over there. And we're having that problem as well as riders coming out of the communities and just riding all over the place. I'm in the process right now of contacting our Off-Road Vehicle Enforcement Team for the county. We have a full team that's with the SWAT team that actually does Off-Road Vehicle Enforcement. I'm in the process of bringing them out, so I'm trying to figure out what dates, times are best. And we'll have them come out for maybe a couple of weekends.
Yeah, it's weekends.
See if we can stop.
It's weekends.
It seems to be weekends for us, because I go in and out that road a lot.
I mean, it's super busy.
That's been that way forever. I started the Off-Road Vehicle Program here when I was at Lake Elsinore, shoot, oh, 2003, 2004. And one of our primary focuses was that area. I did a lot of riding out there myself and writing tickets. So this has been going on for 20 years. So it seems like it's getting back to where it was. And back then it was camping out and fires going.
It's COVID.
Nowhere else to go.
So I'll get them out here, and we'll focus on shutting that down.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good, thanks.
Awesome.
Okay, and then lastly, I just wanted to give you guys an update. I know you all heard last month, the illegal dumping of the U-Haul that was abandoned there. So we got that cleaned up the next day. The U-Haul was towed. And we did contact, we made contact with the responsible party. He was cited and billed for the cleanup.
How come, why did they dump it? Did you find out?
There was a lot of different stories. They were going to go to the landfill. How they ended up there, who knows?
Right.
Long ways.
Yeah. I think the initial intent was to dump it there and leave, and they got stuck. Because you can tell based on the way the tires were in the traction, they were just stuck and ran.
One of the things that we discussed in our budget and finance meeting today was doing a volunteer kind of city serve cleanup. I mentioned it with Mike, we're going to try to put something together where we can work with code enforcement and do an outreach program with community members and say, hey, here's a chance to serve the city. And we're going to do a BLM cleanup day, or we're going to do a town center cleanup day, or, you know, wherever, right? So maybe start thinking, you know, about a good time when that would, when that would happen and how to utilize that service, and let us, you know, the council go out and PR it and see if we can get some good volunteers to really, you know, because a lot of people care about it, it's important. So we want to make sure we maintain it. And I love the fact that Casey drives the same way I do. We go out the back gate and we see trash there, and then it's gone within 24, 48 hours, and that's worst case scenario. I think, I mean, my vision would be hopefully, and we have a few community members who have done this, because I've helped them pick stuff up and load it in trucks and take it off ourselves. And if we can kind of commit to a committee or just have a volunteer program in place, you know, people care about, you know, this community, want to keep it clean, so maybe think about that as we move forward.
And that's pretty much it for the main items. If you guys have any questions.
Thank you, Ruby.
Congratulations.
And congratulations.
Seriously, congratulations. We're so blessed.
Be looking forward to hearing from you every month.
Absolutely.
Well done, okay. So moving on to public comments, Madam City Clerk, would you please read the public comment statement?
Thank you, Mayor. Any person wishing to address the City Council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is asked to submit their comment electronically by sending an email to publiccomment@canyonlakesca.gov. Please note that I will be accepting email comments during this meeting in real time. If you're commenting on an item on the consent calendar or on items not on the agenda, I will read the emailed submissions into the record during the public comments portion of the agenda. If you're commenting on a business item or public hearing, I will read the emailed submissions into the record at the time that particular item is scheduled on the agenda. During this period of social distancing, electronically submitted comments should be no more than 250 words and include the person's name and agenda item number. I have no comments.
Okay. Consent calendar, would you please read the consent calendar statement?
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous City Council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. With the concurrence of the City Council, a council member may request that an item be removed for further discussion. Staff recommends approval of all items.
Is there any council member who would like a consent item pulled?
No.
Seeing none, I need a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar, please.
Make a motion second.
Did you get that? Okay, roll call vote?
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Castillo?
Aye.
Motion carried with Councilmember Aaron Crowns and Councilmember Welty absent.
Man, we are moving right along. Business items. Business item number four. We have receive and file for the review of fiscal year 2019-20 audited financial statements. Hi, Terry.
Hello. Good evening, Your Honorable Mayor, City Council. I got my stuff really early to Anna, so she didn't put me last this time.
Wow.
I do want to stick around for the goal, so I'll be last anyway, so. But anyways, we just completed our audit in December and have the report here. In early December, our audit firm, Lance Salt and Lunghard out of Brea, completed the audit. They also do look at our financial numbers as well as our internal control over all our processes, which are like AP, payroll, cash receiving. They issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance. There were no internal control findings and no compliance findings. Our ending fund balance of the general fund was a little bit over $4 million, $4,061,424, of which $7,000 was non-spendable, $5,000 was assigned, and just a little under $4 million was unassigned and available. Total revenues and transfers in were $5,495, and expenditures were $5,913, leaving a general fund with a decrease of fund balance of $417. Now, if you turn to page number... I'll find it, I swear I will. Page number 84. Our main fund is, we don't have a lot of funds, but our two major funds are the general fund and the special gas tax fund. The general fund, our total assets, just a little bit over $5 million. Our total liabilities are just a little bit under $1 million, so financial shape, city's in good shape. Gas tax fund.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
City's still in good shape.
Okay.
Now that.
That was Canyon Lake, right?
Yes.
Sure we're all paying attention.
Sure, Canyon Lake is in good shape financially.
Good.
If you turn to page 86, this is the statement of revenues and expenditures. So total general fund revenues, $5,480, expenditures, $5,913. You can see our public safety costs of $4.2 million are well over 70% of our expenditures, which we all know. And that $417 number, if you actually remember during the year, we had anticipated a much bigger loss than that. So on page 127 is our budgetary comparison schedule. And so our original budget, we had predicted a $668,000 deficit. At mid-year, we adjusted it to 836, and we came in at 417, so we did much better than we had projected.
And this is during COVID?
Yes, during COVID, so. And so we have a clean opinion, no internal control findings. And a lot of this has to do with Kayla. She does a great job recording the checks and getting the payroll and all that. Makes my job easier. And so I opened up any questions to the auditor or the audit process. And we did have the auditor on the phone this afternoon for the finance committee meeting. She participated in that and went over the audit process, so, the partner.
We did have the auditor on the line, and she was very complimentary, so thank you again for keeping us in line and making us look very professional and good. I appreciate that.
And I think, and that goes to our staff too. Because I think we've done a, over the years, we've done some good things that have got us to where we are. And I'm glad that we're on top of it. And Terry, you've been on the ride for the whole roller coaster.
For a while.
So, I mean, it's refreshing to see where we are and things that we've got and are proposing that will even make this look even better.
Absolutely.
Yeah, hopefully this year we'll have a surplus, so.
That would be phenomenal. Any questions?
Terry, can you just remind us how blessed we are to have the auditor that we do?
We have probably, there's probably top five firms in the country that, in California, that do municipal auditing, and they're like probably number one or two. They probably do close to 50 cities and probably 200 districts. And so for them, at the price they give us, I mean, we're the lowest priced city audit in the state of California.
And that's Canyon Lake, right?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Perfect.
Wow.
Terry, thank you so much.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you so much.
Also, Terry, you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but I just want to point out, we are doing the goals next time we.
Yeah, but if you want to stay.
If you want to stay.
I got a 53-point plan for number six, so, yeah.
Madam Clerk, are there any public comment cards on this item?
We have no comments.
Okay, I need a motion and a second, please.
I've got to mix it up, so I'll be the second.
Just alternate back and forth. A motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Castillo?
Aye.
Motion carried with Councilmember Aaron Crowns and Councilmember Welty absent to approve item number four.
Excellent. Moving along to item number five, adoption of resolution number 2021-2, authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement for property located at 31520 Railroad Canyon. Hi, Mike.
Hi there. Oh, it's freezing in here.
Must be our city manager. I heard he's having a baby, so he might be running a little bit hotter than usual, so.
I guess so.
We'll let this one slide, Mr. City Manager, but it is freezing in here.
It feels good to me, so.
It feels good. No, I'm kidding, it's fine, it's fine.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Tonight, staff is recommending to City Council adopt resolution number 2021-02, authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement for the property located at 31520 Railroad Canyon Road in the Canyon Lake Town Center for a sum not to exceed $400,000 plus closing cost. The property in question is adjacent to City Hall, just to the right of us. It consists of four suites, total square feet's about 3,300 square feet. If you recall, a portion of that, in the upstairs area, also known as the library annex, is a portion that we run out from the current, well, current owner for the time being. And as you know, we've always discussed the probability of maybe acquiring that property so that way we can eventually at one day move our council chambers up to that area. In addition to that, like I said before, there are some tenants in there already that we have. I think one of them's a caregiver's CPR training, and I believe that's it. We have one of the suites vacant for any future potential person that may want, or business that may want to come in. So we see this as a positive purchase, because there's potential of revenue there for us too as well for the, with the tenants that we have now and that we can eventually inquire for that third suite. Also too, kind of a benefit for it too, as well as you know, as part of our, the city's long-term vision strategy plan for the Canyon Lake Town Center, we've always talked about acquiring some of these parcels to kind of help facilitate the process a little bit more easier than before. It's kind of hard to do some of that when you're dealing with about 60 to 70 owners in one town center, which is kind of crazy to think about. So moving forward, should the council adopt resolution 2021-02, the city manager will complete the acquisition process. Closing escrow is anticipated to be somewhere at around, at about January 24th, 25th. Could be sooner, we don't know. Everything's been going relatively smoothly. All the inspections have been done. There's been some repair work that's been also completed. But very, very minimal stuff. The building is in really, really good shape. I'm extremely confident that the building is in good standing order. And again, this purchase is extremely beneficial for the city. In addition to that, staff has recommended the city utilize a portion of its existing line of credit with Citizens Bank, Business Bank, to fund the purchase, rather than, I think, getting into revenues, that sort of thing. I think we got a really good price on the building, so I think the line of credit should be sufficient for what we need, so. Questions?
Madam Mayor, I got a few questions, if you may.
Sure.
Do you, Mike, do you recall what the list price of the property was before we put it under contract? The first list price?
Yeah, the initial list price was $600,000.
And how much did we pay for it again?
$400,000.
So $200,000, then, okay, I just want that to be put in the record. The other thing is, when we're looking at our line of credit and funding the purchase of this property, do we have an idea of what that monthly payment would be?
That might be a question for Terry, if you.
Terry, just a ballpark?
Our current monthly payment on the $500,000 loan is about $1,400 a month.
Okay, so it's going to be roughly 12 to 13 maybe, because it's about that? What is the, what are the source of revenue currently bringing in right now?
We're paying the interest only on the loan through the rents that come in.
Okay, so it's a wash, basically?
Councilman, or, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem, if I could address that a little bit too. For this, are you asking about this building?
This particular building, yes.
So this building brings in somewhere between $1,700 and $1,800 a month in rent. However, 1,100 of that is us.
Yes, that's, I know, that's, yeah.
So, you know, we can expect, you know, $6,000, $700 a month for the two existing tenants. But there's a sizable suite, it's about 880 square feet, that is vacant. So once we lease that out, that number will go up quite a bit. And also keep in mind that we will then no longer have to pay that $1,100 a month in rent that we're paying now. We're locked into that lease, there's no early exit clause, so we're locked into that until at some point in 2023, I think. So.
So we're paying ourselves back through property. So the potential revenue is almost a wash. We think we can probably get another few hundred bucks for that extra room that you were talking about, Mr. City Manager. Probably more than that, so I mean, that would be the goal, right? Obviously, as we're purchasing property, it's got to pay for itself, and this would be a way to do that.
Also, I might point out that the current per square foot lease rates are pretty low.
Right.
So over time, I think we can get those closer to market numbers, which will increase our revenue as well.
So to recap, we bought the property $200,000 less than it was on the market. We're not only acquiring property and probably giving them much-needed facelifts, but we're able to pay ourselves back through this property by not having to give the $6, $700 that we already pay as is, and we have the potential to own this piece of property and have it pay for itself. I'm done. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
In addition to that, there's always a probability too, if the city ever decides to expand City Hall, we can always, we're just one wall away, so that's always a probability too, later down in the future.
Excellent. Anything from you?
Got it.
Okay. Madam Clerk, are there any public comments on this issue?
No public comments.
Okay, I need a motion.
Motion.
And a second.
Time gone it.
You guys are quick.
Second. Larry's getting me. He's quick. Larry, you've been walking, I can tell. Anytime you've been exercising, you, uh.
I, I saw you with your finger on the button.
Larry, you're fast, man.
Motion and a second to approve this item. Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Castillo.
Aye.
Motion carried to approve resolution number 2021-02 with Councilmember Aaron Crowns and Councilmember Welty absent.
Okay, moving right on to item number six, contract amendment.
Yes, the recommendation of City Council is to authorize the city manager to enter into a service agreement with PV Maintenance to continue our on-call service for street and facility maintenance. Currently, right now, PV Maintenance contract, or actually, it, the contract that we had with them has expired, expired December 31st. We're looking for a two-year extension for their contract. PV Maintenance currently, right now, does a lot of the on-call service that's needed for, for anything related to Railroad Canyon Road, whether there be an accident cleanup. Recently, we had a, we had a, an accident where the sound wall was, was, was hit by a drunk driver. So, we had those repaired. They come out and help facilitate with some of that work. Aside from just your normal public works or street type of maintenance, they do help also with facilities as well. They were ones that installed all the hand sanitation stations that you see throughout City Hall. They, they have been, they have been a great service to have. They're, they're quick to respond, even on, on days where, where, you know, where late at night, weekends, Sunday nights, they're, they're, they're always out here when, on, on a call. And, and they've done nothing but great service for us since we've had them on board. So, staff is seeking, just a recommendation from the City Council to proceed forward having the city manager agree with the service agreement and move forward with PV Maintenance for another two years.
Okay.
Questions?
Question, Mike, did you, is this just an extension of the existing, or did you go out to bid?
This is just an extension of the exist.
And it, and is the current costing the same, or is it going to go up?
What, what they had, had asked us to do is they wanted to, if, if they were okay with us moving forward to keeping the same current cost for this first year, 2021, but with the probability of maybe increasing those costs in 2022, depending how things.
Will that be negotiated?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, of course.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No comments.
Need a motion and a second?
I'm not getting in Larry's way. Oh, so moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Castillo.
Aye.
Motion carried to approve item number six with Councilmember Aaron Crowns and Councilmember Welty absent. Item number seven is a resolution.
Yes, staff is seeking recommendation from City Council to adopt resolution number 2021-03, rejecting all bids received for the roof rehabilitation project. Bid number 2020-002 for the property located at 3154042 Railroad Canyon Road here in the Canyon Lake Town Center. As you know, we, we acquired this property, I believe, back in, in April of, of 2020. One of the first things that we, that we needed to address was roof repair. There's extensive damage that, over time, that, that hasn't been taken care of. So, we, we, we wanted to expedite the roof repair amongst a few other items with regards to, to the, to the property. We, we, in November, I believe it was mid-November of 2020, we went out to bid. We did a bid opening on December 3rd. We received a total of three bids. Those bids are, are listed there on, in front of you in the staff report. Back in 2021, we approved, City Council approved a budget for expenditures towards building improvements of 101,200 dollars. Clearly, these bids that we receive exceeded that amount. Ideally, that 101,200 was not only going to be for, for roof repairs, but additional items that needed to be addressed at the building as well. But, but clearly, the, the bids that we received were well over just the total allocation that we had. So, so staff is recommending that we reject all the bids, restructure the project bid schedule that lists all the different items in there and the costs and related to the roof repair, because again, that's the one thing that's more crucial to get, to get done. And then, and then at some point in the later future, just go out to bid and, and hopefully, we can, we can get something within our, our budget at that time.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Please.
Mike, a couple of questions. Are, the property that we've acquired is very interesting because it has a church in it.
It does.
It's very interesting because the government entity owns a building that houses a church, which is a nonprofit. Is there anything out there in, in relation to grants or funding or anything that can offset some of these costs because it's a nonprofit, or anything along those lines? I know it's more of a Terry question, but.
Nothing comes to mind that, that, that I would think because there's a church as one of the tenants. However, because it's a city-owned property, as you know, we've, we've allocated CDBG funds to help some of the, some of the ADA improvements or requirements that, that the building does need. So, so although the roof is one thing, we, we do have money already set aside to help with, with some of the, some of the issues that are there. But, but grants of that nature, I'm, I'm, I haven't come across anything like that that maybe could help.
You know, looking at these bids, it's absurd, right? I mean, 228,000 dollars to 321, I mean, the scale, let alone is one conversation. But was, were these bids narrowed into just a roof job? Or are we having Tesla put that roof up there for us, or we're getting a charging station for our city manager?
This was strictly just a roof job.
This is just a roof job.
Just a roof job, yes.
I, I think maybe because of prevailing wage and contracts.
No, I know that's a big part of it, yeah.
That is, that is part of it, yes.
That is part of it, yeah. But the other, the question I would have, Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yeah.
With this 101, 200,000, or 200, essentially 101,000.
Yeah.
How did we derive that number? Did we have the roof surveyed? Did we have?
Okay, yeah. This, this property, getting this repaired, has probably been the biggest thorn in staff's side over the past year. When, when we were doing our due diligence before finalizing the purchase of the building, I mean, we knew going in that this building had a lot of issues. That's why we got such an incredibly good deal on it. I mean, this building appraised at 1.2 million dollars and we got it for 725, you know? So, we knew we were going to have to spend some money to get it fixed up. But before finalizing the purchase, we had a number of different professionals come out and, and give us estimates of, of what it would take to get the building up, up to, up to speed. So, you know, we, we certainly had roofers come out and take a look. And the, the numbers they gave us were not prevailing wage, but they were low enough that we knew, look, even if we doubled those numbers, it would be okay. And so, we based, I don't know if, if you recall, but at the time, I presented the council with a.
55,000, I think.
With a spreadsheet of, of, kind of with a line items. And, and those numbers came from the estimates we received from, from those contractors. And so, what, what we found is, and let me say, too, that our economic development consultant, Bill Blankenship, has taken the lead on this project and is just hitting his head against the wall because he's met with so many contractors that, that have come out. Anything over 50,000, we have to go out to bid, right? And so, some of the early bids we got on the roof were, were less than that. Bid is not the wrong term. Some, some of the early estimates were, were under 50,000. And so, the very first question he would ask is, are you a prevailing wage contractor? Do you do prevailing wage? Oh, yes, 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 we are, okay. Can you come out and, and take a look and give us a proposal to, on this, okay? And then some of those proposals were in the 30s, some were in the 40s. And then when he would go to the next step and say, look, we, we like your, your estimate, could you send us your, you know, number from the Department of Industrial Relations showing that you're prevailing wage? And then they would stop communicating. So.
Just like, stop communicating.
Stop communicating. One, one contractor did respond to him and say, look, this job isn't big enough. It's not worth it for me to, to, to go through all of that, right? And so, the, the bids, the, the proposals we received at that point from contractors who were willing to prove to us that they were prevailing wage, at the time, we thought were astronomically high. They were, you know, 100, 130,000, or whatever. 90-something thousand dollars, right? And we thought, and we thought at the time, well, that's ridiculous, that's, you know. So, we went round and round and round for months. And finally, we said, you know what, let's just, let's just put this out to bid. So, we did that in November, and we only got three proposals. And, and, and this is, my jaw dropped when, when I, when I saw these numbers. I mean, to have a non-pervailing wage contractor say they could do the same job for, you know, I don't know, 47 or 48,000 dollars, you know? And, and we think part of the problem is that most of these prevailing wage contractors are used to much larger jobs. And this is a very small job for them. And to make it worth their time, they had to quote us these, these high numbers. And so, we're, we struggled with it, we continue to struggle with it. We do have a lead on an interesting company, though, that I believe our city attorney and Bill Blankenship are, are meeting with, is it tomorrow? Tomorrow. I, I guess the best way I can describe it is that they piggyback on, on contracts from other, other public entities. It's possible we may have to make some, some, some changes to our procurement policy to allow us to, to operate that way. But that might be, that might end up being the solution here.
I know a concrete company that does that, too. So, that's normal.
So, we're, we're, we're working on the solution. It's been a frustrating process. I had hoped to have this roof done long before rainy season was upon us, and, you know, that's not going to happen now, so.
Well, we've got, good news is dry year. But this is, I'm, I'm just thinking of the square footage of that building.
Oh, my gosh.
And the roof. And being familiar with prevailing wage, yes, it does usually double sometimes. And you were obviously right on, double it, you're in, in the ballpark because they've got to be bonded, insured, and all the other stuff that we require. But this amount just looks like they were trying to gouge us. I mean, especially the 321,000 for a little roof. I mean, they got a tear-off and a, it's crazy. So.
Oh, it's insane.
Okay, I agree with you, Mike.
Any, any other questions?
I just want to say, you know, I'm so blessed that we have smart people in the city, in City Hall, you know, that are taking the time and the due diligence to read the writing on the wall and do the research and know what is good and what is not. And I know this thing is a big project, but seriously, guys, thank you for taking the time and beating your heads against the wall. And Bill, I know you have better things to do than listen to this council meeting, but thank you as well for, you know, all the hard work that you're doing on this. So, hopefully tomorrow's a good day in, in regards to this particular item. So, if there's no other comments, I'll make that motion that we reject all these ridiculous bids on business item number seven.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Roll call vote, please. Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Castillo.
Aye.
Motion carried to approve resolution 2021-03 with Councilmember Aaron Crowns and Councilmember Welty absent.
Business item eight is ratification of COVID-19 prevention program.
Madam Mayor, I think, you know, Councilman Green had a comment.
I was just going to ask Mike to. AC?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry?
AC?
Oh.
Yes, thank you.
Just when it's getting comfortable in here.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sitting in the ice cube.
I'm so blessed that you've kept my diet coat cold.
I would have brought my, my, my overnight coat.
And Mayor, there were, just for the record, there were no public comments on item seven.
Thank you, skip that right away.
Thanks, Mike.
I imagine if there were, they would be equally outraged.
Or they wanted to be part of the bid.
Yeah.
Okay. Item eight, ratification of COVID-19 prevention program.
So, in late 2020, we received OSHA guidance and the state legislature passed a new law, AB 685, that it placed various requirements for COVID protection plans on employers. The city manager reached out to our firm, asked if our firm had a example policy. As it so happened, all of our other city clients were in the process of pooling their resources to create a legally acceptable COVID-19 prevention program. And so, what we did is we simply pulled the resources. We created a program that all of our clients could use. We then held a meeting with the city manager and other staff. We then custom-tailored it to the city of Canyon Lake and its requirements. And the city manager, because these plans needed to be in place before January 1st, 2021, and because we did not have a council meeting in between the date that we had put this together and the first of the year, the city manager pursuant to his authority under the municipal code adopted the COVID protection, prevention program and set it to be ratified by the city council at this meeting. If you go through the plan, I'll just do a couple of highlights. One of the things is to make sure that the CPP is distributed to all the employees so that they understand it. It identifies and evaluates COVID-19 hazards. So, if you're exposed, what do you do? What does the city do? When is testing required? When do we have to report an outbreak, if we have one, to the county? And how are we going to be doing employee screening? So, when should they be looking at whether they have COVID-19? When should they be looking at reporting that to the city? It's pretty standard and straightforward. It's much easier to work with than the example policy that the state cooked up. But if you do have any questions, let me and the city manager know, I'm sure we can answer them.
Okay.
No, I would just say that I've seen a lot of these lately, based on my day job, and this just looks easy for staff to understand and for us to remain in compliance.
Right, the, the one that came from the state was unreadable. Frankly, like, I looked at it.
It was confusing.
I don't know who was supposed to use it, but I had trouble following it. And so, the nice part was, is that we were able to get it in regular English. We were able to go through it step by step with, with staff, get their input and get it customized for the city so that it works for, for them.
Does this have to be submitted to the state?
I don't believe it has to be submitted to the state, but we do have it on file.
They'd probably want to steal it.
You know, you know, the county health officer might come walking by one day. I, I do know that, you know, if we did have a significant outbreak, it'd be important that we, we be able to demonstrate that we have this in place.
Okay, thank you.
So, you know, the, the city, I, I would just like to point out, though, that notwithstanding the fact that we had not put pen to paper and come up with a 12-page policy, the city manager and the staff have taken COVID-19 extremely seriously.
Yeah, absolutely.
Since the pandemic began and following best practices while at the same time making sure they continue to provide services to the city's residents. So, you know, just because the policy was adopted on December 17th doesn't mean that they weren't basically doing all this stuff anyway.
Right, and I would like to say kudos to the city for that. I know staff has all been very hands-on and participatory. I think that policy is also nice because it isn't overly burdensome.
Right.
And that was something I had concerns about after seeing the state House.
Right.
Looks good to me. Any other questions?
Just, just one comment. We've, we're, we've been dealing with a lot of these in regards to our agencies as well. You know, some of the boards that I serve on, and we've been looking at these as well. And all of us have been giving good feedback on what we can do as a government agency to kind of help not only with staffing issues, but public issues as well. Have we looked at anything in regards to funding or the help with getting Canyon Lakers' funds to take a COVID test or to facilitate, facilitate resources for them to make that happen? I know that in our community, it's, it's not as common for people not to be able to afford a test or whatnot. But we're seeing a lot of other cities come up with ideas and concepts that allow people to go to, whether it's a link or whether it's, you know, somewhere from their city and say, hey, look, here's a way that you can get your test, here's where it's at. I know our Facebook page has been doing a great job at just identifying our numbers and where we're at as a whole, as a community. But maybe we go one step farther and we let people know that, hey, here's a safe place on where you can take a test. I don't know if it's possible, if we can find a way to find grant funding to help pay for some of these tests. I think more people would be inclined and more comfortable with that process if they know that they weren't having to pay for it out of pocket. I don't know, I just want to have that discussion. When I, when I saw COVID on here, I wanted to have that discussion with the body, so.
Can I comment on that?
Yes.
The testing site for Riverside County, the different testing sites that are out there, those are free. You have to make an appointment via online. It usually is a two-day.
now. And it's a forty-eight to seventy-two hour turnaround. And they notify either by your phone or your email.
Yeah, the, I should have clarified. The one I was talking about was the rapid testing.
Yeah. And rapid testing, from what I've gathered, the, the price range runs from a hundred to two-hundred plus.
That's what I'm hearing, too.
And those are, you know, obviously quicker. There's some of them are more difficult to get into.
Yeah. And, and I guess, you know, the conversation that we've been having on the regional level is, is the rapid testing is, is starting to climb more than it was before in regards to usage because people are thinking that they can know now they can stop the, the meeting that they're going to have in three or four hours or whatever it might be. At least what we saw in the last couple of meetings I was in, because of a rapid test that took place, there was going to be an outbreak, at least they thought. So, just wondering if, if there's been any communication on, on that, you know, at least being resources for it.
Yeah. You know, I, I have not seen anything in the way of grant funds available specifically for rapid tests. I agree with you that they're tremendously beneficial. In fact, before returning from the, the holiday break, all staff were required to, uh, report to a rapid testing site and, and be tested before they could come to the office. And it proved very beneficial as two of our people who are actually interwest employees under contract with the city and the building department ended up testing positive. So, had they reported to the office, very likely that would have spread to other staff and really hindered our ability to, to function. So, I, you know, the rapid tests are phenomenal. They are , well, pricey.
Yes.
And of course, when, when we require staff to be tested, then we have to allow them to do so on, on city time. And the city, you know, has to cover the costs of, of those tests. And I think we'll get some of that reimbursed to us through, through the fee my reimbursement process.
Yeah.
But I haven't seen, in terms of the general public and the rapid tests, I, I haven't seen anything out there that, if, in terms of grant money to, for us to be able to cover those costs for the residents.
Maybe what we could do is, is, you know, the rapid test is fairly new. I mean, with all things considering, right? Maybe if we just did something on social media just to let people know that it exists and that if you want to take it now. Because the conversations that I'm having with people is, I just found out that my uncle has COVID. And I was at the Christmas party or the New Year's party, or I was with him last weekend. I wish I could know right now if I have COVID or not because I'm doing this. So, I mean, that person, a hundred percent would have, if they knew that there was a rapid test available, would go down and do that. That's just my thought.
Yeah. Here's one other thing that's coming up. And it's coming up very quickly. They're still in the formulation stage of the, the vaccines.
Yeah.
And some of the test sites are going to be now those drive sites. So, I think as that information comes available, if we could put it out, because I'd be in ask questions, when is it going to come available? Who's going to get it? Guidelines are changing. I think they've, they've got a targeted population they're after right now. But I think that looks like they're going to expedite the vaccine process. And that means more vaccines going to be available. So, they want to start really pushing out the inoculation phase. So, if we could, as that's made available, and I know it's sketchy right now, I just got a, and you did too, Mike, just an email from the county that they're setting up the pods, which are points of distribution. And, uh, and actually, the pods were, that whole concept was designed well before COVID came along. It was designed for a pandemic situation, but it wasn't this one. But, um, so pods are throughout the county, and that's going to be one of our points. But I'm going to imagine ma, maybe the stadium will be switched to a drive-up injection site. I don't know.
And, and, you know, just Larry, you're right on. The, the county just announced after their board of supervisors meeting that they're going to move forward in that direction and make it readily available. This is just me, not to get too political. But my suggestion is, is that we lean on the county, just because we don't know the results of those vaccines yet. And they're still coming out. And there's different serums that are being presented that some people are reacting differently from. I know the county's going to do their due diligence to make sure they test all that they possibly can. But I know that I don't want to be in that situation where I'm suggesting, hey, you know, here you go. At least for me, there's still a lot of tests that are being done and whatnot. So, you know, that's, that's where I'm at with it. But the most resources that we can provide, I think, is going to be the best as, as it comes to help our people out.
Any other comments, questions? Any public comments?
No public comments.
Mm-mm.
Motion, and second to ratify and approve the COVID-19 prevention program.
Make a motion to ratify the COVID-19 prevention program?
Yep, I'll second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Castillo.
Aye.
Motion carried with Councilmember Aaron Krantz and Councilmember Welty absent.
Okay. Moving on to item number nine, discussion of the twenty-twenty-one committee and agency assignments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, before you tonight, we have the twenty-twenty-one committee and agency assignments. Every year, the city council reviews its representatives and alternates to the various agencies, as well as the city committees, to determine if any changes or additions are appropriate. I've attached the committee roster for twenty-twenty as well as a blank committee roster for twenty-twenty-one. I also have posted a Form eight-oh-six, which puts us in compliance with FPPC regulations. Therefore, the city council can proceed with appointments tonight.
Okay.
So, if it's okay with you, I will just go down the list. And then I, I'll let you know which, which spots we have available. And then you can just tell me if you have any suggestions. And I can just kind of make notes. And then we'll, we'll go from there if that works.
Sounds good.
Okay. So, we're going to start with the city of Canyon Lake standing committees. We have our finance and planning committee. We need a chair and a member.
What do you say, Councilmember, or, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Smith?
I would, yeah, I would love to serve on, on that committee again. I think we're doing good work. And I think it would be, uh, it would be an honor.
Okay. I would also like to continue to serve on that committee. I think we've done some good work. Any objections from you?
Not at all.
Okay. Do you mind if I take over as chair?
I would love that.
Like to boss you around. So, I will take chair. And Mayor Protem Smith as the member.
Perfect. Thank you. Next, we have the city of Canyon Lake ad hoc committees. We'll start with the cannabis committee. We currently have Councilman Green.
Yeah.
And we had former Councilman Bonner.
I'd still like to be on the cannabis. And I don't mind chairing it.
Okay.
Perfect.
Um, any other suggestions for who might serve with you or volunteer? You think Dale might be a good idea?
I think Larry should pick, yeah.
Okay. You can show him the ropes thus far?
Well, I can at least try.
Okay. Councilmember Green as member chair and Councilmember Welty.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the city's ad hoc committee, fire, or fire ad hoc committee, excuse me. We have currently Councilmember Green and Council, Mayor Protem Smith.
I personally think this is great as set.
Perfect.
Anyone?
That's fine.
Objections?
I love it. I want to see it through.
Okay.
Get her to the end.
Amen, brother.
Next, we have our Veterans Day committee.
If it's all the same to everyone, I would like to continue to chair this committee.
Absolutely.
And I know that Councilmember Aaron Krantz would also like to continue on in his role.
Okay.
No objection there?
Nope.
Awesome.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the regional agency assignments. We'll start with, actually, I'm sorry. We're going to move on to Canyon Lake Emergency Preparedness Committee. We need a council liaison. And then we need staff support. We currently have Councilman Green. And staff support, we have admin services manager Borja.
I'll, I'll still do it. Yeah. I don't mind doing it because Mike and I have cut relationships with the county. So.
You also are very popular with the members of that committee, by the way.
No objection. Absolutely.
I think that's great. Okay?
Thank you. So, regional agency assignments, we'll start with LEJWA, Lake Elsinore-San Jacinto Watershed Authority. We currently have our delegate is our Mayor Castillo. And our alternate was former Councilmember Bonner.
Um, in speaking with Councilmember Welty during the pendency of his campaign, I know lake issues are something he's passionate about. So, if we could put him as the delegate, and I'd be happy to serve as the alternate.
Great.
Perfect. No objection.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the Los Angeles-San Diego-Sen-Louis-Abysville Rail Corridor Agency. We had former Councilmember Bonner serving as the board member.
Who's got transportation?
I do.
Would you like?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Mayor Protem.
You got to help me out, though, Anna, because I have no idea when they meet or what's going on.
Absolutely. We'll, we'll touch base on that. And we'll get you all situated.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on to the Move I-15 Through Temecula Valley Task Force. We have committee members. We have Mayor Protem Smith and former Councilmember Bonner.
Jeremy?
Yeah, if you don't mind. I mean, I, I rotated with Randy on this one. He wanted to sit in that, the capacity. So, um, yeah. But I, I can, I, I know it pretty good and out. So, if someone would like to sit on it with me.
I'll, I'll sit with you.
Perfect.
Excellent. I love the volunteerism. Okay?
Thank you. Next, we have PERMA, which is Public Entity Risk Management Authority. We have, this is going to be on, on the staff level. But we have our city manager and our admin services manager sitting as member and alternate.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I regret to inform the council that I was recently appointed to the executive committee on, on PERMA.
Well, we're pulling you. I'm just kidding.
Don't worry. We'll take care of that right now, Chris.
Wow, that's fantastic. Thank you.
Great.
We're going to move on to the Quail Valley Environmental Coalition. We have our Mayor Castillo and former Councilmember Bonner.
This group works somewhat hand-in-hand with LEJWA occasionally.
Dale.
So, I would say Dale and I can be the other member.
No objection.
Okay.
We'll move on to the RCA, Regional Conservation Authority. We currently have, as the board member to the RCA Board of Directors, we have Councilman Green. And the alternate board member is Council, Mayor Protem Smith, excuse me.
I have developed a pretty good relationship. And so, I would like to stay on that board.
Absolutely.
I'm also on the executive board, although I had to reapply. So, we're waiting for, obviously, the, um, the, the reorg to take place. And then we'll meet. So.
I don't see why we should change it.
No, it was good. When I got to serve on the board, um, in Larry's absence, it's clear as day that Larry's well-respected on that board. And I think he's the right choice.
Got to maintain those regional relationships.
Amen.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to the RCTC Riverside County Transportation Commission. We currently have commissioner was former Councilmember Bonner. And commissioner alternate is Mayor Protem Smith.
What if we move Jeremy to the commissioner and then Larry, since there's some overlap with RCTC and RCA?
Okay.
Would you mind?
No.
Would you mind?
I'm, I've, I've been waiting to serve on this board for a long time. This one means a lot to me just because, uh, been able to intern with them and do a lot of work. So, it's been a blessing already serving on it. So, absolutely.
Okay, good.
Okay. We're going to move on to the RTA Riverside Transit Agency. Currently, as director, we have Mayor Protem Smith. And alternate director, we had former Councilmember Bonner.
Keeping in line with that theme, would you mind?
No, absolutely.
As the director and the alternate?
Okay.
Next, we have the Southern California Association of Governments Energy and Environment Committee. We currently have, as the energy and environment committee member, is Councilmember Aaron Krantz.
So, um, I just want to have a discussion on this. And maybe, Chris, you can help out with this. Aaron Krantz is a representative to SCAG from WRCOG.
That sounds correct to me.
So, this makes it seem like there's an appointment solely for this because we're the city of Canyon Lake.
I think it is.
So, I, not to correct, you know, what is here, but this list is also contrived of the boards that we get to serve on because of relationships that we've obtained. For instance, the SCAG Southern California Station of Governments and Transportation Committee. The only reason why I'm on that committee is because I got a presidential appointment, not because of the city of Canyon Lake.
Correct. I'm not sure that the council appoints these positions.
Correct. These, this, the SCAG's positions that are here is not made up by this body. It's made up by other bodies and other entities.
Correct.
So, these ones are irrelevant to this conversation.
Okay. So, I can go ahead and remove those.
Is what I'm thinking. I just wanted to clarify.
If, if I could ask Mayor Protem, um, do you know off the top of your head how the terms run? So, for example, for the SCAG Transportation Committee that you serve on, does that term reset?
Yeah, I was just.
This month or?
I was just reappointed last month.
Okay, very good.
For the next fiscal year. So.
Is it, is it a one-year term or?
It's, it's one-year term for these appointments. Um, at WRCOG, it's the same thing. So, because Jordan, uh, sorry, Councilman Aaron, Aaron Krantz sits on WRCOG, WRCOG as a body allowed him to represent them at SCAG for, um, for Energy and Environmental Committee.
Okay, very good. So, then, for purposes of this, this spreadsheet, let's just go ahead and fill in, uh, Councilman Aaron Krantz under the Energy Environment, Environment Committee, and Mayor Protem Smith for the Transportation Committee.
Yeah. And I just wanted to clarify because if the cities, you know, I would have known if SCAG is now allowing cities to, um, send representatives.
Right.
You know, because that would have been fun. But anyways.
Okay.
Well, represent as well.
Absolutely. All things transportation.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on to the SCFA JPA with the Animal Friends. Our board member currently is former Councilmember Bonner. And our alternate board member is Councilmember Green.
I don't mind being the board member.
Nice.
So, a point of clarification, the first SCFA position that appears on the spreadsheet is the Executive Management Committee?
This is correct.
I apologize. Yes. And I have the, as the member, I have the city manager listed.
Correct, yeah.
So, Chris, for that one. But in regards to the JPA, Animal Friends of the Valley Board Member, I have no objections to have our mayor, if she's okay with that.
No.
And then alternate would be Larry?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Perfect.
Okay.
And I believe, um, we've made a change even for the Executive Management Committee. Isn't, uh, management analyst Tyler Ferrari serving on that committee?
In your place or?
I believe we changed him to, we'll, we'll work this out on the staff level. But I think we, we took me off and put him in a fire.
Okay.
Well, congratulations there.
So, I will change it to our management analyst. And then we'll just circle back to that and just double-check on that.
Sounds good.
Okay. Next, we have our Northwest Mosquito and Vector Control District. We have our trustee is Councilmember Aaron Krantz. And alternate trustee is Mayor Protem Smith.
Um, I know that Councilmember Aaron Krantz.
Before, we, we, we need to have a discussion on this because.
He loves it, though.
Because here, here's the issue. And Jordan, if you're listening, um, we get these updates. And I love them so much. I mean, I look forward to them every month, even though they are five to six minutes long. How often does this agency meet?
Once a year.
I mean, honestly, do they really meet once a month?
I believe they do, yes.
Yeah, they do, yeah.
So, I, I think that, you know, we should make an exception to vector that there's got to be limitations on how much we can talk about vector, right?
Personally, I find those reports enthralling.
Oh, I bet you do, Mr. City Manager. I bet you do. I would love for Jordan to continue to serve on it, if anyone has any objections.
Nope.
I think also we should put Dale as the alternate.
Absolutely.
There you go.
We've also mentioned to Councilmember Aaron Krantz that maybe we can work something out where we can post this information on the city's website. Maybe we can do like a vector corner or something on the city's website and just kind of maybe post these reports. So, that would be something that we could do to help.
There are a lot of interest on the Facebook pages about vectors. So.
I think next time there's a crazy insect or something, we should take a picture with Jordan next to that insect and post it on Facebook and watch the comments come in.
All right. Next, we have the WCE Western Community Energy. I have the board member as Councilmember Aaron Krantz.
I would think that that's appropriate if anyone has.
Yeah, I think it's fine.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay. And then we're going to move on to the WCE Technical Advisory Committee. We have, our member is our city manager.
Perfect.
Next, we have WRCOG, Western Riverside Council of Governments Executive Committee. I have executive committee member, councilmember Aaron Kranz, and executive committee member alternate was former councilmember Bonner.
Um, I know that councilmember Aaron Kranz has expressed interest in continuing this position. I don't mind being the alternate, anyway.
No, absolutely. It's perfect.
Okay, and lastly, I have the WRCOG Technical Advisory Committee. Our committee member is our city manager.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so I have.
Line up for twenty.
Any public comments on this?
We have no public comments. I will go ahead and make all the changes to the committee rosters. I will print new rosters and provide them in your binders, so you'll each have a copy.
Thank you.
And so if we can just.
Do we need a motion and a second, please?
Yes, please.
To approve the 2021 committee and agency assignments?
I will make that motion.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Castillo?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the 2021 committee and agency assignments with councilmember Aaron Kranz and councilmember Welty absent.
Okay, moving along. Item 10 has been pulled and will be heard at the February 3rd City Council meeting, so we are on to public hearing. This is, um, introduction and first reading of ordinance 203, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Canyon Lake, California.
Yes, thank you. Our city planner, Jim Morrisey, will make the presentation on this item. Jim, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Good evening.
Good evening.
If, I'm sorry, if we can have the mayor open the public hearing first?
Oh, yes. It is 8:02.
Thank you.
Mayor members of the council, this is an ordinance amendment dealing with pool setbacks. Um, a settlement agreement was reached with a property owner who had undertaken some improvements without a building permit. And what we've undertaken is an amendment to the zoning ordinance in response to that to allow pools that are along the rear yard, when the rear yard abuts the lake, to be on the property line. The improvements cannot extend beyond the property line into the adjoining jurisdiction, which is predominantly Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District. Right now, the ordinance requires a five-foot setback from the residents and associated buildings and property lines. Those setbacks would remain, except again in the instance where the pools are adjacent to the rear property line and that property line abuts the lake. Uh, the language, um, for that section, what we tried to do was simply, um, create an exception in the code that, as I mentioned earlier, the five feet would remain, except in a particular circumstance. So, as noted, the circumstances, the placement of it, and then also with respect to the improvements. The recommendation to the council, the first one typically is the environmental action. In this case, uh, to find the amendment to the zoning ordinance exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. And the second item is to approve the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 203 that would deal with this amendment. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, Jim, it's, um, Councilman Green. Uh, just clarification. Uh, pools to be built in the future, okay, do, does the applicant or the homeowner, do they apply for a variance to go to zero property line? Or will they still be required to do the five-foot setback unless they get a variance?
No, I, everything moving forward after adoption and, um, the thirty-day period afterwards for, um, solidifying the ordinance, they would be allowed to place it on the property line. They wouldn't need a variance.
Okay.
The other setbacks, the other setbacks, if they want it to encroach there, yes, they would need a variance. We had an application, oh, I forget how long ago it was, about a year ago, and I think the property owner had infringed on the setback in the rear yard, which this ordinance would have eliminated the need for that, but I also believe they encroached in its placement towards the house itself. And a variance in that case was warranted because the lot was noticeably smaller than the adjoining lots. So, the variance is always open, depending on the circumstances.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Nope.
Any testimony by proponents?
No.
Any testimony by opponents? Public hearing is now closed at 8:06. Any further discussion?
Uh, mayor, if you don't mind, I also wanted to let you know that, um, we had been in contact with EVMWD and the PWA regarding our intent to make this change. This change is consistent with the settlement agreement entered into those, by those two entities regarding the use of the lake.
Okay.
Good.
So, this, this is just our attempt to basically, uh, make the code consistent with what actually exists on the ground in this city.
Okay, that's good. It's cleanup.
Yeah.
Yes.
That seems like a good idea.
We're trying.
Is this happening in Canyon Lake? Imagine that.
One zoning ordinance at a time.
Good job. Good job, guys.
Okay, so I would need a motion and a second to approve the environmental determination.
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Castillo?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the environmental determination with councilmember Aaron Kranz and councilmember Welty absent.
I would also need a motion and a second to approve the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 203.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
And a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Castillo?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 203, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Canyon Lake, California, approving an amendment to the Canyon Lake Municipal Code, Title IX, Planning and Zoning, Section 18.25, Swimming Pools.
Okay, moving on to city manager clients.
Just a couple of brief things this evening, Madam Mayor. Uh, first of all, uh, we are moving forward diligently with the beginning stages of starting the Canyon Lake Fire Department. Uh, we have been, um, we've been evaluating applicants for the, uh, consulting position to help us, uh, get the department up and running. Person probably also have the title of, uh, working title of interim fire chief. We, uh, posted, we did a job posting, uh, and which closed December 10th, we received thirty-eight applications, um, most of which were from people who had fantastic qualifications. Um, the, uh, city's, uh, city council's fire ad hoc committee, along with, uh, city staff, human resources staff, and, and myself, reviewed all of the applications and invited the, uh, top six applicants who we felt, uh, that their background and experience most closely matched the needs of the city, uh, to interview. We put together a seven-member interview panel. It was a, it was a great, uh, a great group. I was very encouraged by the level of participation with our, our surrounding cities and the county. We had the assistant city managers, uh, for the cities of Lake Elsinore and Wildomar on the panel. We had our assistant county executive officer in charge of public safety on the panel. We had the fire chief from the city of Marietta. And, uh, we had the two members from the city council who serve on the, serve on the fire ad hoc committee, Mayor Protam Jeremy Smith and Councilman Larry Green. And, uh, we, we interviewed, uh, five candidates. We had one, um, pull out of the process the, the day before, so of the six. So, we, we interviewed five candidates, um, very strong applicants, and after doing an evaluation of, of those, uh, interviews, the panel felt that there were two that were, um, very strongly the most qualified. I met with both of those individuals this week and have been checking references, and so we're in the final stages of evaluation. Um, we hope to extend an offer by the end of this week, and, uh, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll have completed, um, the background work we needed to do and be in a position to be able to publicly announce, uh, the, the chosen individual. We'd like to have them onboard, uh, February 1st, which I think is doable, and, um, then we will start the, the work ahead over the next eleven months of putting this department together. So, it's been a, um, very encouraging process so far. We're experiencing a lot of support from our neighboring cities and the county, and, um, it's, uh, um, things are going well so far.
Awesome.
Yes. Uh, we've had a couple of staffing changes here at the city. Our, uh, uh, previous, uh, senior code enforcement officer, Gina Dixon, accepted a position, uh, with the fire department in the city of Marietta. Uh, her last day was Thursday of last week. Um, we have promoted, uh, code enforcement officer, uh, Ruby Manzano to the, to the senior code enforcement officer position, and, um, we are currently hiring, uh, for the vacant code enforcement officer position. We, uh, we had some good applicants. I believe interviews are tomorrow, so we should have a new person in that position shortly. Our office specialist, our senior office specialist, who's been with us for a number of years, Vicky Day, um, also recently left us. She, uh, she and her husband are, are retired and looking to, to do some more traveling together, and so her last day was Thursday of last week as well. We have, uh, our, our second office specialist, Aaron Enriquez, who's done a fantastic job for us over the past year. So, uh, she was, she's been promoted to the senior office specialist position, and, uh, a big win for our new internship program. One of our standout interns, Bailey Ward, has accepted, uh, the, the vacant office specialist position. So, she started in that position last week, and she's already doing a fantastic job.
Awesome.
There. Um, we, we originally had on the agenda tonight our goals setting. Uh, we, we decided to, to pull that item until February, because it, I'd, I'd really like to have the whole council present for that, not just for the setting of the goals for this year, but, um, in reviewing what has been, the progress that's been made on the goals that were set by the council for 2020. Uh, I sat down to, every year I do a, a matrix to go over, uh, what the goals were for the previous year and the progress that's been made on each goal, and uh, when I sat down to do that this year, um, I allotted four hours to put that together, and man, I was way off. Um, until you sit down and look at, at, at all the things that, that the city did, uh, the past year, I mean, it's just, it's mind-blowing. What was accomplished in 2020, and so I really look forward to making that presentation, uh, at, at the February meeting. Um, and then we will, uh, probably have a special city council meeting mid-February to go over our mid-year budget review and, and budget adjustments. Um, our finance director, Terry Shea, uh, requested a little bit more time. He, he won't be, uh, he'd like a little bit more time than the February 3rd meeting, uh, but we'd like to not wait until March, so, uh, we'll probably schedule a, a special city council meeting in mid-February for that. Um, and that is all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Green?
Thank you. Uh, most of the, all the committees that I've been working with, uh, were all dark. The RCA, of course, is dark until probably February, until we reorg with, uh, our new parent body, and emergency preparedness and everything else has been shut down because of COVID. Just been trying to, uh, work through the different things. It seems to be more and more people I know and more and more families, um, are coming down with COVID. Unfortunately, um, met one of the, know one of the people that passed away in the lake. And, uh, that exposure was tragic, and, uh, actually, it wasn't due to anything of themselves. It came to them in an unusual way. So, anyway, just beware, um, we're not past the peak yet, and we'll just see how it goes. And look forward to a report next month, because things will be back up and running full speed, but we, 2020 is gone, but it, we accomplished a lot of things, and I gotta say, uh, thank you not only to the staff, the city manager, our guidance from our attorney, but our council. Our council has, uh, has gelled, has come and has set a pathway and a vision that I think our mayor will share with you and the public, who is out there, uh, of our, our goals to not only be a viable city, but be a sustainable city for many, many years to come. We have an anniversary. Uh, we hope to have many other anniversaries, and so we're taking those steps now to develop a better foundation for our future, and I want to say, uh, hats off to all of our folks that work here who have contributed to where we are and continue to contribute today. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protam Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, bear with me, I got a few things here. Um, it's been, uh, it's been a busy month, you know, obviously, January, December's busy, not just because of the holidays, but a lot of different transitions, a lot of different, what do we do, what can we do, what can we accomplish? So, bear with me as I give some key points of what took place over the year 2020 with some of our regional boards that I get the, uh, that I get to serve on. Um, SCAG, one of the biggest things that we're dealing with in our Transportation Committee is how to handle this, um, this new thought of 2035, which is all thing that is electric. So, fossil fuel has been everything that we know, um, in all things transportation, and now we're trying to battle on how we go to the next step and make things all-electric. So, it's a big issue, um, that we're looking up and down the state of California, um, and it's affecting all of our regional boards. Um, when we look at RCTC, um, there's a lot of new projects that have taken place over the year and a lot of things that have, um, been approved. So, for my commuters out there that do, um, engage in our council meetings, this is some really good information, um, for you who's going to San Diego or to Orange County. Um, there's over $722 million in current construction contracts that are taking place, uh, throughout Riverside County. This is a huge overwhelming, um, amount of projects that we've taken on over the last, um, well, decade now, but we've had a lot of success in 2020 getting these approved. Five highway projects, seventeen rail projects, over 10,000 jobs, um, you know, that have been pushed out just because of RCTC and the governing cities coming together. Um, one of the big things that we're going to see, uh, moving forward is the corridor on the 15 and 91. They're going to start completing that project, um, of expanding, uh, the toll roads. Um, even more so, uh, grant funding was approved for our commuters going through Temecula into San Diego, uh, and that's going to be a huge, uh, benefit to expand some of those lanes, because the traffic to San Diego is just absolutely terrible, um, as most of us know. SB 132 was a big component of some of these projects, over $180 million towards, uh, the $270 million investment that we've, uh, allocated towards these projects. Um, and lastly, you know, there's been a big, um, facelift at RCTC. Um, you know, we're going to be, uh, taking on RCA, so it'll be fun to be able to work with, uh, Larry at that component. Um, but the two boards are going to come together and work on projects, and I think it's going to be a positive move, um, not only for the two, uh, boards to come together, but for Riverside as a whole, since we do so many things together already, so that's going to be, um, very interesting. The last thing I want to talk about is, uh, RTA Riverside Transportation Agency. Um, COVID's a real thing, um, and it's impacting uh, those that are on the front lines, and those are your, your nurses and your doctors and, um, your grocery store attendants and people who are working in the fast-food industry. Uh, for me, I see it day in and day out with our bus ridership. Um, I see it with our bus drivers. Um, sadly, you know, we had a huge outbreak, uh, throughout RTA, and, and this isn't because the staff are, are being wild or whatnot. It's just because of the job that they have. Um, there was recent tests taking place, and over, uh, twenty-two employees, uh, received, had COVID, um, that tested positive recently. Um, ridership is down sixty-two percent, um, compared to, um, last year. And, um, the good news, the good news in what has taken place in 2020 is we've been able to push hard on giving meals to seniors and, um, underprivileged, uh, residents in Riverside County, and we delivered over 105,000 meals to people that needed it through our county. Um, and this was because of, you know, the, the hard work that was done, um, and our RTA and allocating those resources to make sure that we're facilitating those meals. Another thing that we're doing to combat COVID is we're looking at programs to allow people that need to get sent to test centers and allowing them to get a free ride. So, um, we're really working together, coming up with new ideas, um, on, on a regional board to try to facilitate, um, to help people in need, um, not only just when it comes to food, but also medical needs as well. So, I'm very blessed to be able to serve on these committees, um, and to report back that, uh, 2020 did not stop, um, not only the city, but the other agencies as a whole, on keep on moving forward in the right direction. So, um, I'm hoping that 2021 will be an even better year. I don't know if it's possible for us to continue, uh, doing more than we've already done, but, um, it's pretty amazing where we've come as a city. Uh, the last thing I want to report is, is I want to give a huge shout-out to, um, our city manager and our staff. Uh, we, uh, had the opportunity. We had the opportunity to be part of an interview panel last week, looking at establishing our own fire department and looking at a potential chief, and it was just very professional. It was well done. It's pretty amazing how many strong applicants we had, and, you know, inviting the right people to participate, and that really shows that the importance of our regional approach, which is a part of our goals. So, I just want to say thank you to the staff, thank you to our city manager, and congratulations on a very successful, difficult year, and once again, just makes me so proud to be part, you know, not only of this community, but all the hard work that's doing. So, I'm sorry that was a little longer than three minutes. Jordan wasn't here, so I took a couple of minutes of his.
I didn't have it.
But I spoke fast. It's a lot of information, and thank you for the time, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Well, I would just like to close with 2020 is going to be better than 2021, or 20, 2021 is going to be better than 2020. I know it.
Amen.
You all know it. It's going to happen. Obviously, still some hurdles. I've heard from the community members that they want to be present at these meetings.
Yes.
And we know that. As soon as it is safe for our small-city staff and we're able to do so in line with the regional approach, we'll do that. But for now, hopefully, you are all tuning in on our various social media avenues to get your updates and to be able to participate. No public comments tonight. That's okay, but we would definitely like participation. We are going to be doing the citizen of the month. I'm super excited about that because we should be starting every council meeting with some good news, and there are a lot of great people in the city of Canyon Lake, and we want to recognize them. I'd like to ask everyone to continue to support our Canyon Lake businesses and restaurants. And then, just want to also pledge that this council will be accessible, this council will be responsible, communicative, and responsive. That is a personal goal that I have for 2021, and I know that I share that with our council. Additionally, I've had some comments from citizens asking about updates on the Big T Railroad Canyon traffic issue. I've heard that that's in the works. It's on its way. It's happening potentially next week. So, 2021 is going to be a year of going and doing, and I'm excited, and I hope our citizens are excited as well.
Absolutely.
And congratulations to Chris, because next time we see you, you're going to have a baby.
You bet that.
So, thank you all for a really good meeting. We missed you, Jordan and Dale, and looks like next regular council meeting will be Wednesday, February 3rd at 5:00 p.m. for a closed session and 6:30 for open session, and we are adjourned at 8:23.